If you don't mind, let's see where that.
Thank you.
Do you need to?
I can, if he has them.
I didn't know for the rest of the agenda. Yes, I can read them.
You just offered him, but not by vocals.
Okay, good afternoon. It's time for our regularly scheduled meeting. It is Tuesday, March 5th, and we are ready for our meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, today it is Commissioner Nguyen to do the prayer, so please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which its stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
My Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, my Father, we thank you for the men and women who serve our city in leadership and other roles and their families. We pray that they continue to govern us through safety to our entire city. Grant to us the light and graces that are necessary to perfectly discharge and virtue that way that we may all become true servants of you. Provide us with the wisdom, strength, and courage to love what we are asked to love. We ask this through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Okay, it's time for the approval of the minutes of the last regular meeting, so which, if no corrections are offered, shall stand approved. Was there any?
I noticed just an extra motion at the end, right before the consent agenda.
Okay, we'll get that cleaned up. Thank you.
Do we have, do we have anybody here for coming up?
There's nobody signed up, but if you can, you can.
I can, yeah, I can just let anyone know that if they decide to come up, at this time is public comment. So if you are here, any news that you would like to announce other than what's on the agenda, please come up to the microphone and state your name for the record. Don't see anybody, so we'll continue.
Move on to item 6A. The governing body is asked to consider and approve event requests for the Plymill Elementary School students for the 2024 Plymill Legacy Mile. These requests include a waiver of fees associated with the closure of public vehicle access to Lee Richardson Zoo from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And, Mayor Commissioners, we have representatives from Plymill Elementary School here to further present on this item, and I'll invite them up at this time.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Amy Younger, and I'm a librarian at Plymill Elementary, and I have brought these amazing kids from our student life house team that are going to ask our requests.
Hey, if you guys come to the mic, so people can hear what you're, what you're gonna say, please. Thank you.
Hello, I am Jackson Cut. This is the I O group, David Hammond, and Drew McDonald, and we are from Plymill Elementary School. We are part of the student life host team at our school, which means we are leaders in our school and our community. The reason we are here today is to seek permission to put on Plymill's Legacy Month, which is a one mile run slash race for Plymill students and families at Lee Richardson Zoo on April 24th at 10:00 AM to raise money for Legal Legacy's Greatest Needs Fund. Part of our leader mecca curriculum is to put on, put on a leadership day and service learning program. We worked with the adult life house team to find a community organization to partner with. After a lot of thought, we decided that Legal Legacy Foundation will be best. Our mission is to raise more than $500 for the Legal Legacy Foundation. We chose the Legal Legacy Foundation because of the impact they have on families battling cancer in our community and in our school. My family has been impacted by cancer in this organization. My dad has long tested cancer, and cancer is awful. We as the student life team have decided to donate the money we raised to the greatest needs fund because we feel like it has the greatest impact for most number of patients.
My special request is we are asking permission to close vehicle traffic in the zoo from 8:00 AM until 11:00 AM. We have coordinated with Kristi Newlin on the route and determined it would be safest to have vehicle traffic closed until we are finished with the event, with the exception of event vehicles, which we are coordinating with the zoo. Also, if you have time on the 24th, you are really welcome to come and celebrate with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's awesome. We need our reports to be like that from everybody. You guys did amazing. Yes.
You guys said in March 24th?
No.
April 24th, okay.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the request as presented for the 2024 Plymill Legacy Mile.
Okay, has been a motion. Go ahead, a second.
A second.
Been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passed.
Awesome.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 6B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Vicky Harshberger with Mosaic to allow the mayor to proclaim March 2024 as Intellectual and Development Disabilities Awareness Month in Garden City, Kansas.
Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the proclamation as presented.
Has been a motion. Go ahead, a second.
A second.
Has been a motion and a second. Any? Oh, sure, yes. Go ahead and come up.
Can we, can we get the vote right quick?
We're just, any further discussion on, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passed.
All right. That's okay.
So March is National Intellectual and Developmentive Awareness Month. This year, our theme is inclusion inspires. The March campaign is to wear ways where we are missing about the importance of including people with intellectual and developmental disabilities in all facets of the community life. At Mosaic, we relentlessly pursue opportunities for people that we serve to live full lives and on their terms. Our personalized services, such as our Mosaic Home Program, enable people with intellectual or developmental disabilities and others with diverse needs to pursue their goals and dreams. Thank you for your support and for helping those who they all have the opportunity to be active members of South West Kansas. I guess I should also introduce myself. I'm DC Butler. I'm the Assistant Director and Board of South West Kansas, and also.
And while you're in the party, I want to give you a drink to that Mosaic, and thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Now my delight is so small, and my endurance is important.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor and Commissioners, if you want to kind of make your way to the front, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas the month of 2024 has been designated the National Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in order to celebrate and recognize people with disabilities, and whereas disability is a natural part of the human experience and in no way diminishes the right of people with disabilities to make choices, contribute to society, and experience in full the many blessings of an American society. And whereas members, family members, friends, and community at large all play a role in supporting people with disabilities as they pursue their dreams, and whereas the goals of the city properly include people with disabilities realize, realizing full access to housing, employment, and the recreation activities, which help create productive and satisfying lives and to live as independently as possible. Now, therefore, I, Manuel F. Ortiz, Mayor of the City of Garden City, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2024 as Intellectual and Development Disabilities Awareness Month in the City of Garden City, and call upon the citizens of Garden City to observe the month with appropriate programs and activities. Furthermore, I encourage the citizens of Garden City to seek information from those organizations with expertise in matters concerning developmental disabilities. Sign and sealed. Manuel F. Ortiz. Item C, Mayor and Commissioners, the governing body is asked to consider and allow the mayor to proclaim March 15th, 2024 as Ernesto Farrell Day in Garden City, Kansas.
So I know this was kind of brought up at kind of late today, and we did have a, didn't have much notice to kind of review. I did kind of read the memo that we got, the email today, and I know this is new for us. I know there was probably some discussion that some of the commissioners would like to talk about, so at this time, I'll give them a chance to kind of go through that. Any questions on?
Yes, I think, so we've never had this before, kind of like a.
We have proclamations for a variety of reasons, variety of recognition. There really isn't a protocol or a process. Someone asking for a proclamation on their own behalf is a first for, for those of us that have been with the city.
Yeah, is Ernesto here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Could you give us a little background from thoughts, like?
Oh, yeah, of course. My name is Ernesto Farrell. With this, I want to inspire the youth, young professionals, and artists to, you know, put themselves out there. I mean, I recently ended an artist's day hosted by Garden City Arts. We were talking about what legacy we want to leave behind, and that's really thinking of what I wanted to leave behind in Garden City since I was born and raised, and I've left, and see it grow, and I want to continue to see it grow. You know, I can ask some questions.
I guess, so like, I am so thankful and so grateful for all the work that you've done in our community. I'm kind of a little, I don't know, I, shoot, let me, let me think about this for a second. I guess my biggest concern is, is if proclamations are really a place that's for a special regard. My, I guess I want to have thoughts on what would separate your run-of-the-mill fellow and, let's say, if, if someone saves a cat from a tree, kind of thing, like. Yeah, so I, like, do you guys have any thoughts on this?
You know, we, we have done proclamations for birthdays, but it's been on special occasions, like for people that have reached milestones in their life, like 100 years old or greater in their life, that have given back to the community. As a governing body, we're requesting that the community recognizes people from our, if you scroll down a little bit, we, we request that everybody recognize, so, and provide guidance to our community on these proclamations. So it is interesting that it's from, usually it's from somebody other than the person themselves that is requesting a proclamation. So it is new for our community. Proclamations do promote, like what we just did for a proclamation for Americans with disabilities, was it disabilities, where we promote that to our community and encourage people to understand and realize and recognize those people for who they are and what their accomplishments are. I would hate to, I would look at it as this way. I would hate to set a precedent for the commission on setting something like this, where we would open up and set a precedent on having people then start asking themselves for other birthdays, or like Kinsenada is in our community. That's a big celebration, and I could see us having numerous proclamations on something like that. I, for myself, I would not make the motion to approve the proclamation at this time.
Any other discussion? I would just like to extend my appreciation of you coming, and this is new for us, understand that, you know, we're just, something of referring yourself is bold and courageous, and I applaud you on that, so, but kind of what we're talking about is how many other people are going to come forward to, to advocate themselves in something like this for, you know, a birthday or things like that. So I think those were some of the questions that arose quickly after we got the email on this, on this proclamation. So I don't think that there's any pushback, or, that's not what I want to say, there's not.
And Mayor, I, I look at it this way, you know, we're, we're actually promoting and recognizing Ernesto right now.
Yeah.
For, for what he has done. I don't think we need to approve it as public record. He's here. I mean, we could, we're treating this kind of right now as our public comment period anyway. I mean, we're recognizing him right now as, as a governing body for his participation and his, his giving back to the community. And he actually has spoken on what he's wanting to do, so actually, he's really promoted kind of his interest in the community.
Yeah, well, the answers always know unless you ask.
Sure. Doesn't hurt to ask, yeah.
Yeah, the answers always know unless you ask. That's why I really want, well, like, artists to do that, like, always ask, kind of get involved, and it's my biggest thing. It's pretty useful out there, and that's what I'm doing.
So I guess what you're, and it was kind of a late notice, so trying to get, reading the memo and everything, we don't usually have those types of things put on the commission. So what's your future endeavors? What are you looking at for your future here in the community, if you're wanting to stay in the community?
I really want to build a organization that helps young artists, like, building and repair, basically what my goal is. That's what Artist's Day was all for, was creating and repairing. And that's, thanks for everything else as well, like, creating and repairing for other young artists. It's really meant to happen, too, and, you know, there's just a lot of art, and it's to be put out in the community, so, you know.
And I know we, in our, in our agenda, we do have an item talking about murals in the community, that we've received, the community, or an organization has received funding to add murals in our community, so, but.
I also want the artists. Yeah, I'm excited to see that on, sorry, but, yeah, I'm excited to see that more artwork.
Okay. Well, thank you for your leadership and, and everything that you do, and.
I think it takes quite a bit to step up and advocate for yourself. I think that's the hardest thing. You can always advocate for others, but it's the hardest to advocate for yourself, I think. I'm very truly grateful that you, that you did that.
Thank you guys for your time. A lot of your last, yeah, I went through the agenda, I was like, this is pretty cool, but, yeah, at least I tried, so I have driving rights on that.
There you go.
Well, and don't give up. Like I said, we're just, you know, this is something that other people might see you as a value, and then we could see this on the table at a future, you know, meeting. So help me, help me pronounce your last name.
Farrell.
Farrell?
Fedd.
Fedd? Okay, yeah, so I just wanted to get that right, so hopefully we can see you back in a.
Can I say something more?
Yeah, sure.
I have a drink at the store called Digger and Steo Drinks. We just want to go, and then Trail is also a drink, and I think he's, his name is, so, that's all.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Sounds like you've got a bright future.
Thank you, Ernesto, and happy early birthday. We'll, we'll, I think right now we have a motion on, on the table, or we do have, no, any motion? Okay, so.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Yep.
Item 6D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Alan Bowles with Altech's Gun Show to waive the sign ordinance and right-of-way restrictions and to have signs placed at eight privately owned businesses from April 22nd through the 29th, 2024. The event is held April 27th through 28th, 2024.
And this is something that we've approved in the past.
This is similar to the one, a request received in the past for other special events. The outlined locations of the businesses are The American Legion, Bruckner Truckstale, Cigarette Outlet, O'Reilly Auto Parts, Timeout Sports Bar, Prairie Wind Aquatics, Rosate Auto Repairs, Willa's Car Wash, Verizon, and Western Kansas Broadcast Center.
Mayor, I move that we approve the request and right-of-way restrictions and have, to have signs placed on the, on the privately owned businesses from April 22nd to the 29th.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passed.
On the report of the city manager, we're excited to announce that Carnesaria Garcia, in partnership with Downtown Vision and Garden City Arts, has received funds from the Kansas Creative Arts Industries Commission, and they're for a mural at 622 North 8th Street, the Carnesaria Garcia location. So we, well, the city doesn't necessarily have a specific role in murals and all that, and it certainly, you know, partners with Garden City Downtown Vision formally and Garden City Arts, a little bit more informally on public art initiatives around the community, and this is a, something worth celebrating and calling to not just your attention, but the community's attention. So we look forward to learning more about that mural in the coming weeks. Item B, I did a, kind of a quick announcement of this at the last meeting, but here's the formal announcement. On February 16th, the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation announced awards for the third round of moderate income housing and Kansas Housing Investor Tax Credits. The City of Garden City had two projects that submitted application. One was Sligo Station, and that was for the tax credits request, and then the other was called Garden City Apartments Project for 140 units, and that was an MIA cash grant, MIH cash grant request. Unfortunately, the Garden City Apartments Project was not awarded funds, but the Sligo Station was awarded 1.2 million in tax credits. So we're looking forward to that project starting very soon, and have had some preliminary conversations with, with the developers about moving, moving forward. So that's, that's an exciting project to get off the ground. Item C, just an update, so back in April of '23, the city had put a remodel project for the law enforcement center on hold after discussions with the county regarding an upcoming facility assessment they were going to conduct due to the likelihood of the assessment identifying significant building repairs and or system improvements. Several months later, the county hired HMN Architects to complete the facility assessment and develop a project cost estimate for the county portion of the LEC and jail. At the December 19th, 2023 city commission meeting, I had notified the governing body of a newly created committee by the Board of County Commissioners to oversee the law enforcement center remodel. The chair of that committee was Duane Dries, and had representation from stakeholder organizations and departments between the city and the county. In addition to Captain E.J. Oaks with the Garden City Police Department, I am also serving as a representative to that board, or that committee. That committee has, has been slated for weekly meetings. On occasion, those get rescheduled or canceled or adjusted, but we have had four meetings since the group was convened. Representatives from HMN Architects have presented findings of the facility assessment to the group, and then they've also brought in a group called Justice, or the county has a preliminary discussion with a group called Justice Planners to provide some additional guidance on the jail portion of the project. So the combination of HMN Architects and Justice Planners, they were on site a week ago, and they're going to begin doing a little bit more analysis specifically on the jail side of things, kind of determining the future of jail needs in Finney County, really before moving forward, I think, on, on, you know, what the full scope or full scale of the LEC remodel might look like. Kind of in layman's terms, if the jail's not going to be in the LEC anymore, then that dramatically changes the system upgrade needs in the LEC and repurposes the third floor. If it remains in the jail, then the systems upgrade. It's need to be sufficient enough to stop the, the conditions that are present right now, which is the leaking of the water in the sewer on the third floor into the remaining portions of the building. So again, just keeping you all posted on that county project, that the county does have the committee that does have some representation from the city in the form of myself and Captain Oaks.
And thank you for keeping us updated and informed on, on that committee and kind of where everything's at.
Yeah.
At this point.
So I think the, go back to the Justice Planners, I think that sounds like it maybe, if the county moves forward with that, and I didn't track yesterday's meeting whether or not they were, that was a business item for them, but presuming they move forward with using Justice Planners, I think that piece will have about a three month, three to four month from the start of their work to the conclusion of their work, to being able to present that to the county commission, and then I think from that point forward that we'll kind of repick up the, the LEC remodel portion. Item D, this is an update on the status of negotiations of the inter-local agreement for Neighborhood and Development Services. So for February 6, 2024, city commission meeting, the governing body approved a consultant-type agreement between the city and county for Neighborhood and Development Services related to planning zoning inspections and code enforcement. Since this action, the city and county staff have met three times to discuss both the city and county proposals, and have, and have developed a few options that are being considered. The next meeting is slated for March 14th. Staff will provide another update at the March 19th or April 2nd meeting that identifies the anticipated next steps.
And thanks for keeping us in the loop on that as well.
You're welcome. The remainers, remainder of the report of the city manager items are staff reports. Do you have any questions on those?
I noticed on the sales tax, I think we hit a record for the month, which is.
It's a big Christmas.
Yeah, definitely.
I think if there's any meetings of note that require RSVPs, RSVPs, please do those through the city clerk's office. And I think we stand ready for item 9A. It's the appropriation ordinance, and if approved, it would be ordinance number 2598-2024A.
Mayor, I move that we approve the appropriation ordinance number 2598-2024A.
Has there been a motion? Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, it's been a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passed.
Item 10A is the first of three nuisance resolutions. We'll go completely through the business item of A, and then if there's nobody here to talk on B and C, we'll read the resolution number and the address of the property affected. Item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution. If approved, it would abate conditions at 207 West Olive. It would also be resolution number 3104-2024. Trent.
Good afternoon. Mayor McShirr, National Director of Neighborhood and Development Services. 207 West Olive Street has a nuisance violation with. Services, 207 West Olive Street has a nuisance violation with assortment of different things in the yard, chairs, dressers, vanity boxes, dryer, washer, wood furniture, workout machines, something like that. Another debris scattered throughout. Property owners were notified on January 23rd, 2024, and February 13th, 2024, and are unable to get any kind of response or communication with them. The alternative to the day, the government may approve the tax resolution, which will allow us to abate the issue. Alternative number two, the government may not approve the tax resolution. Staff recommendations, the government approved the tax resolution. The fiscal note, if any payment costs occurred via this city shall be charged against the lost parcels of the ground which environmental nuisance is located.
Mayor, I make a motion. We approve resolution 3104-2024.
I second.
Okay, has been motioned. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion pass.
Item B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution. If approved, this would be resolution 3105-2024 and abate nuisance conditions at 509 Jenny Avenue.
Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number 3105-2024.
I second.
Okay, it's been motioned. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion pass.
Mayor, item C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution, which if approved would be resolution 3106-2024 and abate conditions at 1510 North 13th Street.
We approve resolution number 3106-2024.
I'll second that.
It's been motioned. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trent. Item 11A, the governing body, this is old business. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the bid alternates from Lee Construction for restroom facilities and a pavilion at Southeast Park. Nolan.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The city commission approved a base bid for the Lee Construction for $869,900 last February the 20th. And that was the base bid. We'll utilize the remaining balance of the Southeast Park Project Fund, which is $779,501 and 51 cents, and the $90,699.49 from the collections from the .15 sales tax to the, cup of the full base bid of Lee Construction for the Southeast Park Fix Four Project. Commissioner Wynn recommended we table the discussion and vote for the alternatives on the restrooms today. So the options presented are the restroom and pavilion, which is $540,500, or the restroom only for $442,100. Both options would be paid by through the .15 sales tax fund. So if the commission elects to approve one of the two options, the city will utilize funds from the .15 sales tax to pay for the cost of the project. If the cost at the same time exceeds the available funds, the cost will be paid from the Community Trust Reserve Fund. At the end of the year, once the excess revenues of the .15 sales tax are collected, a transfer will be conducted to reimburse the Community Trust Reserve Fund. The assumptions for the excess revenues the city expects from the .15 sales tax in 2024 are based on collections from the last 18 months. The risk for allocating the .15 sales tax revenues towards other projects would be that downturn in sales tax collections could leave a deficit coverage of debt service, and the city would need to find other sources to comply with the debt service obligations. So our four alternatives, governing body may approve the restroom and pavilion for $540,500. Second alternative, the governing body may approve the restroom only option, which is $442,100. Governing body may deny both restroom facility alternatives. And then lastly, lastly, the governing body may give further direction or recommendation. Staff recommends the governing body approve the restroom and pavilion option, utilizing collections of .15 sales tax fund. Staff recognizes the importance of having restroom facilities at Southeast Park. And albeit modified feel that added 100,000 for increment, the city commission accomplishes all the elements proposed in Southeast Park Master Plan. Fiscal note, restroom facilities, alternatives would be funded through the .15 cent sales tax fund, but the costs exceed available funds of .15 sales tax. At the time of the city is invoiced, the cost will be paid from the Community Trust Reserve Fund. At the end of the year, once the excess revenues of the .15 sales tax are collected, a transfer will be conducted to reverse the Community Trust Reserve and balance of the Community Trust Reserve as of the end of the year, last year, December 31st, 2023 was $243,946. Questions?
Nolan, so last, last meeting, you guys just talked, and I know you, thank you for doing all of the kind of looks and seeing if we can save dollars and, and not doing the, you know, this item or that item. Is there any further exploration on that that you guys done between now and then that maybe you foresee that could be a savings?
Oh, we have not had any additional.
I know it's very important for that community up there to have those bathrooms. And I, I think at any park anyways, that would need, you need, you'd need bathrooms, so.
Those restrooms would be year round restrooms. So they'd be similar to Boyer Stevens or Ambassador's Restrooms. A lot of the other ones, we give it to close for the winter seasons. Those would be able to keep open, you know, eight to five during the winter.
I think I'm pretty inclined to have restrooms. I guess my own question is, how do you guys feel about the pavilion? Because I do, and you know, that's really important to accomplish the proposed OS Park Master Plan. Wonder if the added 100,000 increment proposes, I don't know, if it's, is that more beneficial to the area?
In my opinion and expertise, that's a good price for that pavilion. And I mean, if I would take the pavilion over the toilets, I would, but that doesn't seem like it's an available option here.
Yeah.
But yeah.
I see it. Once you're, once you're staged and you're in the construction mode, you might as well do both. And like the mayor was saying, it's, it's a pretty, it's a good price for an investment in that, in that location. And it will finish out the park.
Yes, that, that will be a complete project, right, after what was kind of pictured in that development there? Or was there something?
I think as much as, I mean, no parks ever done, right? I mean, we're still making improvements to Finnick and Finnick Scout over time. But I do think that's the bulk of the master planning. Am I correct? Granted, it's been modified since its original, original concept, kind of scaling down to get the price, get a hold of the pricing. But, you know, I think for the time being, this completes the park and makes it fully, fully active. And that's a, been a park about a decade in the making, almost. I think we may have put the parking back in and like the 2015 bond, I think may have been what helped pay for that. So the parking's been down there and ready to go. And then the, the dirt work, the irrigation, the seating, the track or the trail, the outdoor fitness center, and now this piece would be kind of the common piece.
And I really think it's something that the community needs for that area. I mean, there's, the community is growing in that direction. I mean, we've had housing units built, we've got additional housing being built in that area. So I think it's something that is, is needed in that part of the community.
Mayor, I do want to share that Commissioner Andrew had provided you some comments that he wanted to read on this agenda item. And I've got those called up if you want me to go ahead.
Yes, go ahead.
Mayor, I want to voice my support for the bathroom and pavilion that was presented during the February 20th, 24, 2020, 2020, 2024 commission meeting. From my experience, these are an essential part of a park, and Southeast Park will be an incredible asset to the community. With its location near the two schools, the regional shopping center, and new sports of the world complex, it will be a valuable resource and a great place for families. I recommend we do it right from the beginning, as it will be a testimony to our commitment to spaces and places for outdoor recreation. Thank you in advance, Troy Andrew. So again, Commissioner Andrew knew he was going to be absent for this meeting, but wanted to make sure his comments were read.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move that we approve restaurants and pavilion for $540,500.
I'll second.
Okay, has been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you. And actually, our playground equipment arrives tomorrow.
Awesome.
We'll be set up later, but we actually had a hand.
Thank you.
Item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the mayor to sign the certificate to the director of accounts and reports for Kansas Department of Revenue regarding sales tax revenue reduction due to changes in state sales tax for food and food ingredients. Jared, make that interesting.
As provided in section 13 of 2022 House Bill 2510, the governing body of each city or county that has established a star bond district is required on July 1st and January 1st to certify to the director of accounts and reports that the amount equaled the amount by which revenue realized from sales tax was reduced for the preceding six month period due to the legislative changes in the state's sales tax for food and food ingredients. The reduction amount for the, for the city star bond project as provided by the Kansas Department of Revenue for the period of July 1, 2023 to December 31, 2023 is $78,262.14. So the alternative today, the governing body may authorize the mayor to sign a certificate, certification notice to the Kansas Department of Revenue, or the governing body may not authorize the mayor to sign their certification notice to the Kansas Department of Revenue. The recommendation from staff is that the governing body authorize the mayor to sign their certification notice to the Kansas Department of Revenue. As a fiscal note, upon submission of the certification notice to the Department of Revenue, the value of the reduced revenue will be distributed to the Kansas Department of Revenue and applied to the sales tax proceeds account for the Sports of the World Starbonds Project. These proceeds are used to pay the debt service of the Starbonds bonds. So there's no fiscal impact for the city per se. I have to answer your questions, Joe.
And this is mainly collected from the Starbonds District area.
It's only collected, yeah. So specifically Starbonds, any provider or vendor there that sells food or food ingredients, that's our reduction in that sales tax collection upon what we would have projected when the Starbonds was initiated, is basically what the state's saying, hey, we'll account for that because that was the plan from getting on the change to plan. So they give us the number, they calculate it, and we just sign off saying, yeah, we agree. And then they just reverse that to go towards those Starbonds payments, just like all the sales tax that's collected goes to that same amount.
Can you give us a brief description on that Starbonds area, where it starts and stops?
There's a lot, there's a couple of different ones over there. But really, it's the kind of old Chicago, the Ford Fitness that area, the children crossing, they cross the street, kind of that whole regional area. It's where the world comes out of, is the Starbonds District in a nutshell. And so the sales tax collected in that area, the state's portion goes towards paying the debt service on those bonds, and the city and the county have committed their portion, a portion of their selections as well, that go towards the debt service.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the authorization for this, for you to sign the certificate notice to the Kansas State Department of Revenue.
Okay, has been a motion. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay, has been motion and second. And all, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion pass.
Thank you.
Item 12B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an infrastructure improvement agreement with Maverick Inc. for work to be done on East Mary Street.
Good afternoon. Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm presenting this item for my current director of public works and utilities. The governing body is asked to, this agreement, Maverick Inc. East Mary Street, which is to be developed into a commercial property. The city desires to modify certain geometric design elements and related infrastructure for a small portion of East Mary Street that is adjacent to the proposed development and desires for this work to be performed by the contractors who will already be on site to perform work for the development. This work shall generally consist of the realignment of the chicane, which is an area between the US 83 exit and Buffalo Way, where the road goes from five lanes to four lanes, back up to five lanes. And so it creates a little dip in the road and turns how it, how traffic flows. The proposed agreement, if approved today, by the governing body agrees that the city will reimburse the developer for the costs associated with this work up to a certain not to exceed amount of $90,000. Wilson and Company have provided their estimate of $86,068.23 for the work to be done. And the developers, engineers also agree with the estimated cost to have the work completed. All the work will be completed in accordance with the general improvements handbook, along with inspections by city staff to ensure compliance. Alternatives for the governing body, the governing body may choose to approve the infrastructure improvement agreement with Maverick Incorporated for the price not to exceed $90,000. The governing body may choose not to approve the infrastructure improvement agreement with Maverick Incorporated with the price not to exceed $90,000. And lastly, the governing body may choose not to approve the agreement and not have the proposed work done at this time. Staff recommends approval of the infrastructure improvement agreement with Maverick Incorporated with a price not to exceed $90,000. And the fiscal note identifies funding for this project would come from material street repair. The GL code for that is referenced in the memo. And the current balance in that fund is $443,915.3 cents. Thank you.
So they're doing the work to correct that, that slight dip, we'll call it a dip, in the road where it corrects. So we're correcting that is what, what we're trying to do?
Yeah.
Okay. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the infrastructure improvement agreement with Maverick Inc. with a price not to exceed $90,000.
Okay, there's been a motion.
I second.
Been a motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion pass. Thanks, Red.
Thank you.
Item C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the distribution of the first portion of the $50,000 of AFAK funds as recommended by staff. Funding for Alcohol Fund Advisory Committee is established in Kansas State Statute 79-41A04. This creates an alcoholic liquor fund created from alcohol consumption tax funds. State law also prescribes how those monies are to be distributed back to local units of government. For cities with population greater than 6,000, the law sets forth that one third of the money be created, be credited to the general fund, one third to special parks and recreation fund, and one third to special alcohol and drug programs funded in the city's treasury. With few treatment and prevention facilities or agencies in Garden City, past awards have largely been made to agencies which have provided an expanded definition of prevention based on accepted categories of prevention strategies. This added flexibility aims to keep the funds local. The AFAK grants are split into two halves, and this is not by statute, but by recent city practice directed by the governing body. Applications for the first 50% are approved if the organization meets the requirements of the statute. These applications are reviewed by staff and can receive up to $6,000 through that process. The first half of the distribution for AFAK funds received eight applications requesting a total of $45,460. All applications are attached to this agenda item. The city of Garden City and Finney County have budgeted $50,000 for the first, for the first distribution. After reviewing agency proposals, staff respectively. After reviewing agency proposals, staff respectively submits the funding recommendations outlined in the graph that follows in this memo and is shown up on the screen. The city of Garden City will be responsible for 90% of the recommended allocation, or $40,914. And Finney County will be responsible for the remaining 10% of the recommended allocation, or $4,546. This will go before the county commission at their March 18, 2024 meeting. And just for your information or as a reminder, 90-10 percentage allocation is, is very similar and based on, it's an approximation of the amount of the taxes that go to the city government and the county government. So they're proportionate to the receipts received by both agencies. Your alternatives, the governing body may approve staff's recommendation to fully fund all eight applications for first round AFAK funding, or the governing body may alter staff's recommendation, or the governing body may provide alternative direction. It's our recommendation that you approve the funding as shown in the graph. And if approved, the city of Garden City will expend the city's portion of the amount from the AFAK fund dedicated to this grant round. This leaves a remaining $9,086 of unallocated funds for this portion of the grant process that could be allocated later if the commission chooses.
Mayor, I make a motion we approve the status recommendation to fully fund all eight applications for the first round of AFAK funding as presented.
A second.
Okay, it's been a motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed.
Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the distribution of the second portion of the $50,000 of AFAK funds as recommended by the Livwell County Board. I'll give a little bit of background, and then there may or may not be somebody from the committee here that, if you've got questions. Alcohol Fund Advisory Committee was established in 1982 to advise the governing bodies of the city and county on the distribution of alcohol consumption tax funds. And the remainder of that paragraph gives you the same state statute and description of the use of the money. AFAK funds are split 50/50, as I mentioned on the last item. This is the portion that I would, that would characterize as being competitive, applications, and those are reviewed by the Livwell Finney County Board. And this round, we only had one applicant, that was Big Brothers Big Sisters. And they requested $25,000. And it is the recommendation of the Livwell Finney County Board to fully fund that request. Again, the city is responsible for 90% of the recommended allocation, which would be $22,500, and the remaining 10% of that allocation would go before the county commission at the March 18 meeting. So your options are to approve the recommendation of the Livwell Finney County Board to award $25,000 to Big Brothers Big Sisters. You may alter that recommendation or provide alternative direction. Staff recommends approval.
Mayor, I move we approve the recommendation from the Livwell Finney County Board to award $25,000 to Big Brothers Big Sisters.
A second.
Okay, it's been a motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Item E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve reappointing Chris Law to a three-year term on the sales tax oversight board. The city and Finney County Board of Commissioners, oh, I'm sorry, Jared, go ahead.
All you, Matt.
I've got, I need a drink of water.
So the city and Finney County Board of Commissioners entered into an interlocal agreement August of 2017 in advance of a successful November 2017 countywide .30 cents sales tax ballot issued that, among other things, created an oversight board with responsibilities to periodically review sales tax receipts and ensure distributions and expenses are used and paid in accordance with the language of the ballot issue. The sales tax oversight board consists of six members. Two of those positions are appointed by the city commission. Kathleen Whitley was appointed in 2018 to a five-year term and was reappointed in January 2023 to another five-year term and then March 31, 2028. Gerald Schultz was appointed in 2018 to a three-year term. Mr. Schultz was completing the second three-year term on the board when he was elected as a county commissioner. With Mr. Schultz's election to the Finney County Board of Commissioners, he asked to be replaced as a city appointee on the board. The governing body appointed Chris Law to fulfill the unfinished term of Mr. Schultz ending on March 31, 2024. Mr. Law has expressed a desire to be reappointed to another three-year term on the oversight board with the term of April 1, 2024 and March 31, 2027. The alternatives today are to approve reappointing Chris Law to a three-year term ending March 27 on the sales tax oversight board, or the governing body may approve appointing another individual to the three-year term. And staff recommends the governing body approve reappointing Chris Law to a three-year term ending March 27 on the sales tax oversight board.
Mayor, I move that we approve reappointing Chris Law to a three-year term ending March 2027 on the sales tax oversight board.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been motioned. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Item G is a request for executive session. We don't anticipate any action following that executive session. So if the commission would like to take up the.
Do we have the art grant committee?
F.
Oh, yeah. Why don't we go ahead and do that?
Okay.
All right. The governing body is asked to consider and approve appointments to the art grant committee.
The art grant committee meets annually and makes recommendations to the governing body regarding annual arts grants. The committee is comprised of three at-large positions. Two members, Shawna Deal and Melissa Gallegos, have been on the committee since 2014, and a third member, Trinaniga, has been on the committee since 2017. In 2023, both Ms. Deal and Ms. Gallegos were appointed to a one-year extension ending on December 31, 2023. That leaves two vacant spots remaining on the board and two applicants interested in serving, Cody Kandav and Jessica Montoya. To help ensure that terms for the board are staggered, staff recommends appointing Jessica Montoya to a two-year term and Cody Kandav to a three-year term. There are two alternatives for the governing body to choose from. Alternative one, the governing body may appoint Cody Kandav to a three-year term and Jessica Montoya to a two-year term. And alternative number two, the governing body may not appoint Cody Kandav and Jessica Montoya to the board and continue to recruit board members. It is staff's recommendation that the governing body appoint Cody Kandav to a three-year term and Jessica Montoya to a two-year term. And there's no fiscal.
Mayor, I move that we appoint Cody Kandav to a three-year term and Jessica Montoya to a two-year term.
A second.
Okay, it's been motioned. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Okay, now, item G is an executive session. We don't expect action following the executive session. So if the commission would like to take up the consent agenda items, one through three now, and then do commission reports following that, we can shut down the, the live feed of the meeting and conclude with the executive session. So if, if none of the commissioners want to pull off any of the consent agenda items and talk about them separately, the appropriate motion would be to approve items H1 through three.
Mayor, I move that we approve items H1 through three.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass. Okay, that brings us to the commissioner reports. And first up is Commissioner Nguyen.
Yes. It was Employee Appreciation Day last week. So what you see here is only the big decisions that are made, but the day-to-day operations are ran by the commitment of the community members that spend tireless hours, especially in the snow, the heat, and given their cold offices and leaky offices just to make us run. But also, a big congratulations to Senior Sergeant Matt Cole and Police Budget Analyst Josh Tega for being Employee of the Year for at least department. And on a different note, I was wondering if staff could kind of make some sort of general guideline for proclamations in the future. Definitely not like hard concrete rules, but more as a, as kind of a, some sort of way we can point to and all operate on the same mind instead of just kind of subjectively.
I would be glad to bring something back and have you, have you all review that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners Hessner?
Good pre-meeting this morning, touring the Sports of the World complex and kind of where it's at in its construction process. It's going to be a great addition to our community. Just want to remind everybody, tomorrow is statewide tornado drill. That'll be at 11 o'clock. So if you hear the sirens go off at 11, it's just, we're participating in the statewide tornado drill. Also, great to see the bigger passenger plane departing from Garden City, 76 passengers now. I mean, we were at 50, went up to 60, now we're at 70 plus. So great to see that at our airport. Also, I wanted to mention that the restaurant at the airport is open and heard a lot of great comments about the service and food there. I did attend the Garden City Police Department's award ceremony, so congratulations to all of the officers and their awards and years of service, not only to the department, but to our community as well. One other thing I want to mention before I'm done is that yesterday evening, the Board of Education did approve the school calendar for the next school year. The first day of school will be on Wednesday, August 14. That is a half-day session for kindergarten through fifth graders, fifth grade, seventh graders, and then ninth and 10th grade students. And it's a half-day, and then the 15th is actually a full day of school. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Langgraf.
I just want to first start, what Commissioner Hessner said during the meeting about the record sales tax that we had this month. It's great being able to see that and seeing the growth of the city, bringing in this record amount of sales tax. I also want to just comment and say congratulations to the girls wrestling team at the high school for getting runners up at state. That is great accomplishment, and I'm just really proud of them all for doing that. And also, look forward to, I'm really happy to see the airport restaurant being opened up. I look forward to going there in the future. I'm sure it's going to be lovely, and I really do look forward to trying it. And finally, also, I want to look at the, have looked at, like Commissioner Tom said, the proclamation as well. Maybe have something not so much written, maybe written down, just so that way people do come to the city. We can at least have somewhat of a guideline. So that way, when people do come, they know exactly what this kind of is for. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Okay. I would just like to say thanks to the Plymouth Elementary School coming in here and giving their requests for that, for that variance. Yeah, they did an amazing job. So Matt, you could put that as a request for me to have everybody do that for their reports. No, I'm joking. It would be fun, though, wouldn't it?
Tough bar to try to.
Yeah, it is.
Everybody stepped up their game today.
I did attend the Jenny Wilson Schools for Read Across America. That was a great event. And that morning, got to give high fives to a lot of kindergartners and first graders and second graders. So that was awesome. And I did promise them that I'd go back and have a lunch sometime. So I'm looking forward to that. I was also a judge at the Garden City High School Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge. That was a great event. Those kids are amazing, and they have such brilliant minds that they can come up with some ideas that they presented there at that event. Congratulations to Jenna William, Wilson, who got first place in that, that event. So, and then all the other competitor, like people, students that competed in that as well. Congratulations to them. Yeah, wrestling, I was on my agenda, my agenda to announce that. Commissioner Langgraf, thank you for bringing that up. They, women's sports is, is elevating in the school, it seems like. So that's amazing. I think Prieto's gonna have a tough schedule on his hands with all those girls coming up to compete in their, in that wrestling tournaments. So I also would like to give thanks for the updates, Matt, for the LEC and the NDA agreements. Those are, I think, a crucial and vital part of what, you know, us as commissioners need to be a part of, and, and also just the, the community and other leaderships in our, in our staff to be involved in those updates. So I also like to just extend a thank you to Angelica Castillo Chapel. She invited me to go on the radio for La Cabana. And let me tell you, I was, I was sweating bullets because my Spanish is not that great, but I do understand a lot of Spanish. I just have trouble speaking it. But if you want to, if you want a good laugh, just go to La Cabana's website, and you can kind of watch my video and see how much fumbling I do in there. But it was, it was a lot of fun. So thanks to her. I did, I did ask her and Juan, that, at the radio station, that I would take him to the restaurant when it opened out there at the airport, because that would be something I'd look forward to try as well. So I heard it's good food. They're out of Dodge City, Kansas. So looking forward to going out there and even seeing the finishes out there at the airport. So that was, that would be a, a good time. So with that, I think that's all we have for the reports. So.
Okay, I think at this time, we're ready to consider item 12G. Staff request a governing body, request the governing body consider an executive session pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2 pertaining to consultation with an attorney for the body or agency which would be deemed privileged in an attorney-client relationship and specifically discuss potential litigation. We ask for an executive session of 10 minutes in length to include city attorney Cunningham and myself.
Mayor, I make a motion we go into an executive session pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2 pertaining to consultation with an attorney for the body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. How long?
10 minutes, please.
10 minutes, which will start at, we'll say 2:06, give it that time, and then we'll be out in 2:16 with Matt Allen and Jennifer Cunningham. And it's pertaining to potential litigation.
A second.
Okay, it's been motioned. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.